Hello, everyone. We're gonna start in just a moment. Just make sure get everyone in beforehand. Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. My name is Max Wolf and I'm the Public Policy Manager at the Chamber. We're happy to bring to you a conversation with two candidates running for the District C seat on the Watertown City Council. Today you'll hear from Vincent Pichorelli and Andreas Guzman, who will be on the ballot for the number of our fourth annual citywide election. Additionally, on October tenth, we'll be hosting a conversation with all the out-large candidates, so make sure to register for that on our website. As for the parameters, this will be a one-hour debate. There'll be no opening statement, but each candidate will have ninety seconds to compete a complete a closing one. Other than the closing statement, we will not be using a timer, but I do ask that each candidate be respectful of each other's time, keep their answers concise and focus on the questions asked. I also reserve the right to interrupt and probably will do so in the interest of time. And a recording of this debate will be available after the fact as well. Finally, I did inform the candidates of the last question of today's debate, which is if you could time travel to any one day in world history, just to observe, but not to change anything, which day would you choose and why? So let's get into it. Let's start with Andres. Could you tell us a little bit about your background in the city? What are you doing right now and why are you running for city council?
Um, so a bit about my background, I'm currently a master student at Northeastern, pursuing my degree in urban planning. You know, I don't have like a formal like background in like cities or anything like that. Um, you know, I just was somebody who participates. You know, whenever possible within the like when they have like the community like stuff like Watertown Square and like the um, city guide like how we plan to do like grow and stuff like that. Um, and during the um, during the Watertown Square, I felt like, you know, not everybody was being listened to and I felt like, you know, nobody ever really runs, so why not, you know, try to provide new ideas, you know, change the conversation, how we think and, you know, say, hey, I'm a younger person. Here's, you know, what I would like to see the city pursue.
Thank you. And councillor, uh, could you do the same? Uh, introduce yourself and why are you running for city council again?
So, uh, thank you, um, Max. So I am running, so I'm running for reelection. I first ran in two thousand seventeen. And uh, my impetus for running back then was there was issues with school funding, there was issues with road construction, there were issues with um, financial issues of the town. So I, I first ran with priorities of school funding, uh, street and sidewalk reconstruction and getting all our long-term financial liabilities under control. And uh, I've been working on that. Those three key things, uh, but plenty of other things, uh, all the time. And I think the war town of today is in a much better place, much different place than it was when I first ran in two thousand and seven. Uh, my, and I work, my, I have a full-time job. I work as a business analyst in a company that manufactures industrial fire protection equipment.
Thank you. Andres, uh, first question to you. Your opponent is known as one of the more business-friendly members of the council. Why should the business community vote for you instead?
Um, well, I tend to view things in terms of longer-term Scott time scales. So what I want to do as city councillor is how do we plan Watertown to survive the next ten, twenty, thirty years? Especially with the current federal government, uh, changes that in my opinion, um, could lead to dollar devaluation as well as a lot of economic harm. So my, why I'm running is how do we position Watertown to be both financially healthy and affordable in the long term? Um, and why I think the business community should support me was because I believe in pursuing policies such as an Austrian housing model, which could provide affordable housing, um, at a far cheaper rate for people, which can keep workers within the city, uh, reduce rents uh, in the long term, while also, um, can be used as a mixed, um, uh, mixed development, so we can have businesses on the bottom and these, but on these businesses can be charged cheaper rents in the long term as the city would be able to own these buildings, the city would also act as the developer. Um, and I also urge everybody to read about the Austrian housing model. Uh, I can explain it more. Um, but it's just also, you know, good to, you know, do some background information on that, so you can also understand it. Um, this would in turn allow for the town to be able to withstand a lot of budget cuts, um, and other um, fiscal disasters that most likely will be occurring in the coming decades, uh, due to the decline of US standing.
Thank you, and I'm sure we're gonna get into housing later. Um, councillor Pichorelli, you've served in the council for nearly two decades. Um, is it time for a younger voice in the council? What's your opinion on that?
Um, I do, well, first of all, I do wanna commend Andreas for, for for actually taking the initiative and pulling papers and running for office and, uh, and I, I do think it is, I do think it is important and, uh, one of the things that Andreas had mentioned, uh, when we met at the clerk's office, um, is should anybody ever run unopposed? And, and I have to agree with him. It's, it's actually not healthy for democracy for people to run unopposed. Um, and but so actually I welcome this opportunity to sort of talk about the things that I've done uh, in the past, you know, my, my, uh, incentive, my impetus for running and, and, you know, what I'm going to do in the future. Um, the, it is good, you know, I, one thing I do worry about is filling the pipeline with younger people. And part of the thing is we did with the last charter review is we created a residence advisory committee to help identify and recruit more people to, uh, apply to be on boards, committees and commissions within the town. Uh, people always think that the city council does everything, but in reality is we have the administrative branch, we have the legislative branch, which is the city council, but we have a very robust series of boards, committees and commissions. I think we have something almost thirty at this point that actually, uh, citizen volunteers actually do a lot of the heavy work in making the town run, whether it's on the zoning board of appeals, uh, whether it's on the licensing board, whether it's, it's, uh, uh, something else. So it is important that, uh, that is a good step for, for younger people to kind of get involved and figure out how things work and have a say in the policies of the town. And, um, but we do need to fill the pipeline because as people, you know, people don't want to do this forever and certainly other councils have stepped off after a number of years. Um, but it is important to have people coming up through the ranks who understand.
Um, but in this case, I mean, your opponent is a lot younger than you, so I'm wondering, do you think it's time to have younger voices on the council? I know it's important for other boards and commissions, but on the city council itself, um, it is, you know, generally uh, older people. So I was, I was wondering your take on that. Do you think it's time for, you know, a new slate?
Um, and there's certainly younger people, um, running. There's some, are some younger people that have run, um. Um, I think the youngest person right now is the, the District D councillor. And, uh, and certainly before her, Kenny Woodland was, uh, and he was twenty-two when he first ran for office after he got a law degree. The, um, I mean, you have to weigh, you know, new voices versus experience and things that, uh, I mean, I bring, I've learned a lot in my years in the council. I put a lot of plans in place. And some plans take a long time. So, uh, the, the new high school, for example, that will be opening next April. The first meeting I had in planning that was in two thousand twelve. And it just, things in government take a long time, especially when you get public input. And over the years, I've, uh, sort of as council vice president, I, I have a sort of leading role to play in policies and getting stuff done. And that part of the experience is getting things done, so.
And thank you. And Andres, do you have a response to that?
No, I, I commend, um, you know, Mr. Pichorelli's work over, over the decade. I think, you know, Watertown has moved in a good position, I think. Um, you know, our fiscal position has greatly improved from where we were when I was younger. We have great bond ratings, um. I do always, always think, you know, there is something that he said about experience, but, um, you know, I think, uh, as, you know, I have a more unique, as I lived here my entire life. Um, and I'm also dealing with the affordability crisis. I don't own my own home. I can't, I don't, I live here with my parents, so I can't afford the rent. If I has had to like actually leave, I don't think I could live in Watertown. And I know a lot of people who couldn't live in Watertown. And so, you know, I don't think I've seen enough work in terms of um, positioning, how do we do affordable housing? Uh, I think this council been great with doing the, um, the schools. I commend you, especially with the Net Zero stuff. Genuinely, that's amazing, and I want to applaud you for that, as well as the other council members who work for that. But I also think at the same time, you know, coming in or people in with different experiences, different lived experiences, um, who are dealing with different challenges than a lot of older members on the council who own their own homes. You know, we have a very different vision of how our future is gonna be and how we would like to pursue certain policies.
Okay, uh, thank you. So now let's move into some current issues. Um, right now, our independent and small restaurants are really struggling. There's terrorists, immigration raids, and still lingering effects of inflation and the pandemic. How would you support Watertown's restaurants on the council? Um, we'll start with you, Andres.
Um, this, this is, this is a tough, um, tough position we're in, uh, since food prices are increasing, rents are increasing. Um, there's certainly no magic wand to reduce, um, rents or really anything like that. Uh, I think what we can do is, one, how do we get, um, how do we make it easier for businesses to, um, maintain themselves? Um, for instance, um, like I know in Somerville, this is just an example, um, when the, some people, when some restaurants wanted to do outdoor dining, they needed architectural approval. But a lot of these small businesses can't afford to hire an architect, just like design a couple of like um, places to put, um, like, you know, chairs and tables and stuff like that, you know? And I don't even see that much outdoor dining in the restaurants in Watertown, and I think that's really sad. I think, you know, that's somewhere we could have put little parklets and stuff like that. That's, you know, helps people get out. People love eating outside. Um, that's certainly also not a silver bullet. I think ultimately, um, we have to figure out as a city, um, how do we use our financial resources to, um, or really it, it comes down to land ownership. Um, you know, landlords are gonna keep increasing prices and so you know, the city has to think, okay, how do we procure land that can be developed, that can then sustain these businesses? And then how can we use that to help maintain current businesses still here?
So are you, are you advocating for, uh, the city buying land and being landlord for businesses?
Uh, yeah, that's partly why I mentioned the Austrian model. Uh, we would be the landlord and the developer. We would own these homes in perpetuity as well as the, um, obviously the, the space for the businesses and we could offer low, far lower rents than market rate um, to help encourage businesses to stay.
Thank you. And councillor Pichorelli, um, how would you help, uh, our, our small restaurants that are really struggling? And also, do you think that the city could take on this role as a, as a landlord as well?
Um, so, so one thing about like particularly restaurants, it's, it's impossible to open a restaurant without a liquor license. I mean, that's just sort of the nature of things. Um, and what we did is when we, we rezoned Arsenal Yards to be mixed use. Um, we actually got a special, uh, home rule petition from the legislature with fifteen extra liquor licenses to help allow that to, allow new restaurants to come into town, because every, every liquor license in Watertown had been used by a rest, another restaurant. So if you wanted to open one restaurant, another restaurant had to close and you had to buy their liquor license up. And I know this is something I hate about Massachusetts, uh, general laws, but this was something that was passed the year prohibition was repealed and it's still with us today. Um, so we got a home rule petition, so that allowed all those new restaurants, it, uh, Arsenal Yards to open up with those new restaurants. We're planning on doing the same thing with Watertown Square as part of the Watertown Square redesign. So part of the, the rezoning that we did in Watertown Square, we actually got the state to change the regulations to allow us to require ground floor retail in housing developments. Because that's really sort of crucial to creating a vibrant streetscape. And, uh, if you go to like nice cities, that's what you always see restaurants and shops on the ground floor and, um, housing above. So we are looking at getting some additional liquor licenses for those new restaurants in Watertown Square to take advantage of. So people will be encouraged to, to move there and we just need to figure out how much we're gonna charge them. Did I get the first two years free? You know, that's something we can talk about sort of to encourage that. Uh, we are also gonna, you know, in terms of public realm space, one of the things about the Watertown Square, uh, redesign is we are talking about opening up publicly owned space where the delta is, uh, and having some sort of, uh, kiosks or a little restaurant cut kinds of things there that we would actually own, that we could lease out to, to different, uh, restaurants or food establishments there. Uh, and even, even in the, uh, uh, Mount Auburn Street redesign, we're actually redesigning Coolidge Square where Bigelow Avenue comes in and creating a big new plaza there to help, so hopefully in that public space, uh, local restaurants could actually set up tables and have outdoor dining. Uh, and finally, the last thing is we, we are, we, you know, we, we are set up as a redevelopment agency to, to redevelop some of the public land, particularly the, the surface parking lots the city owns in Watertown Square and doing public-private partnerships to actually uh, allow us to build new buildings with a private developer and figure out, you know, how do we either do that with affordable housing or, or, or retail space that we could then lease out to, um?
Thank you. Um, uh, sorry, we need to move on here, but, um, sticking on Watertown Square and that redevelopment authority, uh, power you're talking about. Um, you know, some small businesses may be displaced in the process of the Watertown Square, um, implementation and how on the council, how would you protect these independent businesses from displacement, maybe assist them in relocating? Um, you know, Andres, I know you talked about the city being a landlord as one solution. So I'll start with councillor Pichorelli. How would you protect these, uh, small businesses from, uh, being displaced? And again, do you think that the city should serve as a landlord to these commercial tenants?
Um, I think, I mean, it's certainly, we could, uh, serve as a landlord. We could buy a building, uh, we could buy a piece of land or an old building and, um, redevelopment is part of the redevelopment agency and actually reserve space for local small businesses. Uh, even perhaps at a reduced rent so that it becomes more affordable, much like we do with, uh, the inclusionary zoning for housing. Uh, we're not there yet, but that's one of the things, uh, we're actually gonna be meeting in executive session, uh, tomorrow to start talking about kicking off the redevelopment plans. But, you know, we don't want businesses to leave, you know? If, if a business is thriving in Watertown Square, you know, we want them to stay, uh, but there are some less desirable properties and we, we actually need to work with the property owners to figure out what they're doing. And some property owners may wanna stay or move to a new place, but, uh, a lot more work to be done and I, I really don't, I can't say what the full council is gonna decide to do, but I think we can do a lot and, and we are committed to actually supporting small businesses in Watertown Square.
And Andres, uh, how do you view protecting small businesses in the case of displacement, especially with the square area plan?
Oh, I think, oh, one, the square will probably lead to a lot of displacement, um. You know, I think what could occur is probably quite a bit of gentrification and we'll see a lot more national brands, uh, take place because they can afford the rent of these new buildings. Um, I know the city is piloting, um, a study to see, build some, uh, parking lots in the back of the CVS. I think personally, that is, well, I think it's great that we're, you know, looking at how to redevelop sites, um. I think, you know, that piece of land is far more valuable to be redeveloped as a larger building where we can, you know, put some of these displaced built, um, businesses, uh, into and also put some housing as well. Um, but, you know, I think as with anything, some things will be lost, but I would like the city to partner with businesses that have been in this community for years on years to make sure that they can relocate and that they can, you know, survive if that means, you know, helping them with some rent for a couple of years somewhere else so that they can get their legs. I think that'd be something to look forward to, but, um, you know, I think as Watertown Square redevelops, we really have to see, think of ourselves as the city like, okay, well, how do we make sure the city can grow in place, that we, as we develop, we're not kicking out people who can't afford the new rents here as people come in?
Thank you. Um, moving on to a different part of the square, uh, Watertown already hosts several bus lanes across the city, including on Mount Auburn Street. Um, in the final square area plan, um, the road redesigns have not yet been, you know, uh, figured out exactly. Would you be in favor of extending those bus lanes all the way through the square? Or do you, or do, would you be against that? And we're gonna start with Andres on this one.
Oh, I would be totally, uh, when I ran, I told people I wanna build a partial busway through the square. It's an important part, I think, towards redeveloping. It'll act as a catalyst. It would improve the station accessibility quality and, you know, overall reliability, you know, to improve through puts. If you have a middle lane running, it has to be middle lane. It can't be on sides like a lot of the, um, the maps shown, that'll just get stuck in traffic and people will just, no. The most efficient way to have it is a middle-running bus lane. Um, we can really create nice stations, um, and I would like the city to petition legislature to create a special tax authority where when buildings do develop, they pay into a pot so that they can pay for these redevelopments, uh, improvements over time, instead of having to just increase property taxes for it. I think, you know, this, this piece of infrastructure will pay for itself. And sadly, we can't bring it all the way down, uh, since, you know, there's a whole other, uh, construction area going on that's gonna be, you know, we lost it, we lost a generational piece of infrastructure further down. Um, by Coolidge Corner, um, not, not Coolidge Corner, um. Oh, what is it called?
Coolidge Square.
Coolidge Square, yeah, sorry. I'm like, it's cool or something, but I'm like, nah, that's not Coolidge Square, uh, Coolidge Corner. Uh, but yeah, so sadly, we can't bring it all the way down there, but, you know, a lot of, I mean, I take the seventy-one, so I deal with this personally all the time. I know plenty of other people too. It gets stuck a lot down there because of all the traffic by the highway, so having a bus lane over there would really improve the area.
Thank you. And councillor Pichorelli, um, same question to you.
Um, so we spent a lot of time looking at how to make traffic in the square better and, and I would just point out that even in the sixteenth century, there were traffic jams in Watertown Square because it was the first place you could cross the river coming out of Boston. So there's always been traffic in Watertown Square. There's, uh, as intriguing as the idea of a dedicated bus lane way, um, is there's just not physically the amount of space. And if we were to do that, uh, part of the current design going to a four-way intersection with the main, to replace the five-way intersection or the four-way intersection to make it operate more efficiently. There will be pullouts there with the bus stops. But if we were to put dedicated lanes there, we would actually lose all the asphalt that we were reducing for car, for vehicles and return about three and a half acres returning back to pedestrians and bicycle use. Central, central lane bus lanes don't work, um, not the least of which from, uh, ADA accessibility because now you're asking people across lanes of moving vehicles to get on and off the buses. Uh, that's something that just really the MBTA does not like and, and, uh, bus riders and accessibility advocates don't like. Uh, I think we are, as we did the Mount Auburn Street reconstruction, we did look at, uh, bus uh, traffic light prioritization where buses can actually force the light green when they're approaching it to to avoid the issue of buses not being able to get through the intersection. So that's as we're replacing all the signals on Mount Auburn Street, it will have that bus priority signal, signalization. We did add some bus lanes at key intersections like Walnut Street and a car, up, Car Street to, to mono, uh, where Belmont Street comes into Mount Auburn Street so that the buses can actually bypass cars that are stopped and, and have priority to get to the intersection and get through it. And we did that as a pilot program about five years ago and it, and it actually greatly improved traffic for everybody, including the cars. So I think we have ways to increa- increase, uh, the speed of buses getting through, through Mount Auburn Street, through the square. Um, but I don't think, uh, center bus lane, the busway is, is, is going to go because we will end up reducing, having to reduce parking. And one of the things we want to do with, uh, the, the construction is preserve the current on-street parking we have or increase it for those small businesses. So this is the tension, right? That small businesses in the square and along Mount Auburn Street, they don't have parking lots. They rely on street parking. Uh, so we can't take that away from them because that will negatively, negatively affect those small businesses.
And thank you, um. I'm gonna give Andres, uh, you know, a chance to respond if he wants to, um. You wanna say anything in response to the, the bus lanes and, and, and for businesses?
Um, one, I know transit activists and they also do, uh, support, um, middle-running bus lanes. And New York's pursuing that. We have middle-running bus lanes in Boston. Um, I think it depends on the design. I never said to expand it. I'm for reducing lanes. I'm just for reducing a car lane. And perhaps getting rid of some of the parking spaces, because if we improve public transit, more people are willing to take public trends. People are willing to take more public transit than they were willing to go to these businesses. You know, there's multiple studies showing that improving public transit helps improve business sales as well. The same thing with bike, uh, bicycle improvements, which is also something I think the ci- uh, the city needs to greatly invest in. And I mean proper, not a couple of just painted lines or something like that. That's not gonna protect the little girl or an old woman or anything.
Andres, so would you support, would you support, uh, bus lanes over street, uh, street parking in that case?
Um, if I'm gonna have to take a long view of the, uh, like positive economic data, yes, it'll pay for itself in the long term, yeah.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, so that's a lot of the square. Let's move on to housing, uh, which is really the number one economic development issue we have in the state. Um, Watertown Square's rezoning went well beyond, um, the minimum required by the NBD Community Act. However, Governor Healy has set a statewide goal of two hundred twenty-two new that, two hundred thousand new units of housing, uh, by twenty thirty-five. Do you think Watertown is doing enough to contribute to that goal, uh, or should we do more? Um, councillor Pichorelli?
Um, so if you look at, uh, the last decade, uh, we did, we, we rezoned a bunch of industrial land as part of our economic development plan to make it mixed use. And many former derelict industrial land properties were actually redeveloped into housing. We, in, in the last, between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, Watertown increased its housing by one thousand five hundred new housing units, uh, which was ten percent of what we had going into, starting with two thousand and ten. So we actually increased our housing stock by ten percent in ten years. All that housing, all fifteen hundred units was in multi-unit apartment buildings. Uh, and if you look at Pleasant Street, you look at Arsenal Street, you, you will see them there. Um, during that time, we also increased our inclusionary zoning from ten percent to fifteen percent. And if a building has over a hundred units of that fifteen percent, one-third of it or five percent of the total have to be, has to be targeted at the sixty-five percent, uh, average medium income, you know, level so that the people who are making fifty thousand dollars a year could afford to live there. So it's a lot. And if you look at the total across all three hundred fifty-one cities and towns in Massachusetts, Watertown added in gross numbers, we were the fourth, fourth highest number of units added in the state. This is a, this is of a, a town that's only four square miles. Uh, so just, uh, Boston and Somerville did more, but ten percent in gross units, fifteen hundred, number four in.
So are you saying we've done enough and?
No, we have not done enough. So we haven't stand, stood still. So when we did the Watertown Square rezoning, the MBTA said, you need one thousand seven hundred units. We instructed the staff to think big. They came back with a proposal for us for three thousand three hundred units. During the here, the, the hearing that we had when we finally voted on it, we actually increased the area where the, the zoning was to four thousand four hundred units. That's unit capacity, not actual, we didn't, so again, more than any other city or town has done in terms of the percentage increase in the MBTA community set.
Thank, thank you. Um, sorry, we need to get.
But I just want, I just wanna say, we're not done. We are working on more housing plans. We have, we've, we've tasked the Affordable Housing Trust to come up with a, a, a new affordable housing plan, uh, which is currently underway right now.
Thank you. And Andre, same question to you. Have we done enough to contribute to this goal and should we do more beyond? Have we done enough to contribute to this goal and should we do more beyond our current rezoning that we did, uh, for the Watertown Square Plan last year?
Um, I think we've done a lot, um. I think we can definitely do more. Uh, I think part of the problem of why, um. You know, the housing crisis is so bad, is there's a lot of lack of, um. Regional planning. Uh, but on a local, like on Watertown, um, I think there are many ways to gently increase density without really having to do too much, um. For instance, uh, we could allow triple deckers to be built as right, by right, we have a lot of two families, so these could be converted over. Or if you have a small house and you already paid off, you can, um, mortgage that again, construct a triple decker there. Get rid of the old one, construct a triple decker there, get some passive income rent. You know, stuff like that, you know, it will slowly increase, um, the density of the city without really changing the character. Um, but overall, I think the city has added a lot, but I also look at the data, um, because I actually had to do, um. I had project on housing affordability in the state, and if you look at it, you know, we really, it goes through huge booms and busts. But Watertown went, has been like this, and we started increasing, but for many years prior. A couple decades ago, you know, we were building almost nothing, it's just like a couple hundred units, so, um, the whole state has to do a lot more, I mean, we. You know, the, the rents are rising, you know, housing prices are rising, um, and I think it's great that we've, uh, rezoned industrial lots. Um, but we have to look at, well, how can we? Like I said, the house, how, Austrian housing model, you know, how can we as a town take action and bold action? Um, and make sure that, you know. You know, because a lot of the affordable housing is based off of federal tax credits, so at some point, they're gonna be private again, and they, you know, people can, you know, jack up the rents. So, you know, how can we make sure certain apartments are kept? Low in terms of rent in perpetuity, so people can stay living here.
Andres, uh, in, in thirty seconds, can you explain what your plan, uh, with, uh, for housing would be, kind of that Austrian style? And is that some form of rent control that you're advocating for?
It, it's, well, I mean, I, I think we should petition the legislature for rent control, but I don't think it would pass, but I think it would put at least some onus more for the state to do something. But the Ha- Austrian housing model is basically, um, the city or the municipality. Would be the developer and landlord, so we would build the housing, I mean, like a perfect, uh. Test site for, would be the construction, the lumber construction site we had recently bought for a couple of million dollars. That'd be a perfect place to test if we can build some housing and businesses on that land. And we can make it some, uh, market rate and some below market rate. And we can keep this in perpetuity, um, and really show the state, you know, here's a pilot project, please. Give us more money so we can expand this or start doing this on a whole, like a larger scale.
Thank you, and councillor, I want your response on two things, uh, that Andre said there. First, legalizing, uh, triple deckers, uh, across the town, which, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, that was one of your ideas. And also petitioning, um, the state legislature to allow rent control. Uh, what do you think about those two policies? Are those something you would pursue in the council?
So, so triple deckers, I mean, it's in essence, be, when we legalize accessory dwelling units. You can be added to. A single-family house or two-family house, so we can essentially, any two-family house in Watertown could be turned into a three-family house today.
I mean, it's a little bit different than a redevelopment.
But, but as a redevelopment, and you know, there are, you know, triple deckers were made illegal, um, in nineteen thirty-seven. Not just in Watertown, but the entire Boston area, and I think that's, that's definitely something we wanna re-envision and that. Because there are a lot of triple-decker houses in the two-family zones, um, and the world has an end, so I think, I think that's definitely. Worth looking at, um, rent control is. I don't know if that's right for Watertown, I don't know if that's right for Massachusetts, um, I do think that. What, one thing we do need, so the market rate, you know, market rate developers build market rate units, we force them to build fifteen percent. Dealed affordable, and that's deeded in perpetuity, as long as that building exists. It's recorded on the deed that those units have to be, uh, dealed affordable. But we need to do more to build. Low-income housing, because there are some people who just can't afford. Uh, market rate units, even the, the, the dealed affordable units at eighty percent AMI. And if you think about the Watertown Housing Authority, the largest number of affordable units in Watertown are owned by the Housing Authority, which is a, which is a public housing agency. No, no new public housing has been built since the nineteen eighties, when, when President Reagan cut all, cut, had funding for that. Uh, one of the things we can do, and which is the reason why we created the Affordable Housing Trust. Is the Affordable Housing Trust can actually buy land and build public housing. And there, they have been tasked with looking at properties to, to do that for, um. I wanna look at sort of, uh, the Willow Park development in, in, in the East End. Um, that's a public-private pro- partnership with the, the building that the Watertown Housing Authority owns. Uh, they were going to lease it to a private developer who was gonna tear it down, build. New buildings with twice as many housing units as there are there today. And that's all going to be affordable, hundred percent affordable. So I think those are the things we're doing, and certainly as we look at the Watertown Square redevelopment authority. Particularly the municipal parking lots, that's what we are actually looking at doing, can we build hundred percent or. Affordable or a mix of affordable workforce housing and, and, and lower income, um. That's something that is within our power to do, and we're actually, this council is actually starting to look to do that and figure out, figure out how to do that. Um, I'll just point out the one thing about one hundred percent affordable housing projects, you need to make the numbers work, because. It has to, the rents have to maintain, be enough to be able to operate, maintain the building.
Thank you, um, and I'm gonna give you a, a chance to respond, Andres, do you think rent control is, is right for Watertown right now?
I view rent control more as a sort of a Band-Aid, um, I don't think the current legislature would pass any sort of rent control. I don't think there's anything wrong with asking. Um, you know, why not, why not at least petition and ask? They're definitely not gonna grant it, they didn't grant it to Watertown, they didn't grant it to Somerville, they didn't grant it to Brookline, they're not gonna grant it to us. But it's important to put pressure on them, you know, we have one of the least efficient legislatures, so it's important. We put pressure on them, um. Would I like to see rent control in Watertown? The data is, is, is mixed, uh, it can certainly, uh, put. Um, it can really depress housing construction, I'll admit that. But I also realize the legislature isn't gonna pass it, so I just think, you know, there's really nothing to lose with at least asking.
Thank you, and, um, right now, um, you know, you, you talked about slow construction. Construction is really hard with the interest rates and, you know, zoning as we, as we talked about. Um, and even tariffs, uh, you know, increasing construction costs. Would you be open on the council to working with developers to reduce linkage fees? And possibly reduce afforded affordability requirements to keep these projects viable, um, we'll start with Andreas on this one.
Um, no, I, I. It would betray my beliefs of, you know, what our community is owed. Uh, but I would be willing to work with them on, um, reducing certain red tapes and hurdles, maybe. Certainly, um, looking at rezoning in general and say like, okay, well, how can we work with you to help? Um, reduce costs, certainly in terms of parking, I think we should have a parking maximum, uh, get rid of parking minimums, um. But I think there's other ways to work with developers and help a project go forward without reducing. Linkage fees and stuff like that, which are important dividends for the community.
And councillor Picharelli?
Um, so as we increased over the last fif- fifteen years, our, uh, inclusionary zoning from. Ten percent to fifteen and a half percent, um, you know, we did that gradually because we didn't want to, you know, basically. Um, stop construction, and certainly there are other communities that have increased their inclusionary zoning to twenty percent, and that essentially. Wasn't done because people wanted more affordable housing, it was done because they wanted to stop. Big projects, um. We've always worked with developers, both commercial developers and residential developers. Watertown is the, we've never had a forty B project. And the reason for that is because we've always worked with developers. And we've received safe harbor under chapter forty B without a single. Forty B project ever being built in Watertown, and I think that, that, that tells you something about what we do. Um, I, I don't think, you know, the linkage fees is something we debated a long time, and, you know, it's the right thing to do, and. I, I, I'm not at this point willing to walk back on that, I'm not willing to increase the amount we charge, but I think. We're at the right place with that, um, and I will just point out that. We have reduced with the Watertown Square zoning, we've reduced, uh, the parking minimums, we've reduced the amount of red tape. That developers need to go through to actually build projects, and there's a, there's. A bunch of projects that are already being proposed for, for new housing in, in Watertown Square right now. Uh, and certainly the current financial market in terms of financing and everything else. The hundred fifty-five unit, uh, apartment building across from the library and Main Street is, is going ahead, and they, they, they're not having problems with. With financing.
So, so quickly, would you support, uh, reducing affordability requirements?
No.
Thank you, um, switching gears a little bit, um, you both talked about the state legislature a little bit. If you could ask the state legislature for one, one bill, one law, um, to help out Watertown, what would it be? Any law in a, and they would have to pass it basically, um, if, if you ask them, uh, we'll start with councillor Pi- Picharelli on this one.
Um, well, aside from giving us this, the home rule, well. There's two things, we have, uh, home petition for liquor licenses and the home rule petition on the hundred seventy-five percent commercial shift. Uh, which are in there, but if I had to ask for something new.
Yes.
I would ask them to completely restructure the chapter seventy-four vocational technical education. Funding scheme that they do, because one of the things that's actually, uh. Really hurting us for workforce development is there's not enough vocational technical training available. In the state, it's, it has become, uh, impossible for kids who wanna pursue, become an HVAC technician. To actually get into a, to a vocational school. It has been broken, we've been studying this at the school, uh, committee for a number of years. But the roadblock is at the state level, I'll just point out from, if we wanna meet our environmental goals at the state level, the state law that said. We need to reduce our carbon emissions by eighty percent by twenty fifty. We don't actually have enough electricians and HVAC technicians in Massachusetts to actually meet that goal.
Thank you.
That's a big problem.
And Andre, same question to you, any law, any ask of the state legislature, what would it be?
Um, well, I'd go slightly different, um. And Mr. Picharelli are here, I would ask for them to implement real electoral reform within the legislature to create a semi. Uh, pro- semi-proportional representation to allow for real multi-party elections, I think this would improve. Um, Watertown, not Watertown, the state overall, we would get a lot more from the legislature to be more active, because there'd be more political parties. And I think, you know, they would be more having to work for our vote. Um, I think in the long term, that'd be healthier, I think Watertown would get more money, we'd get more development, I think, you know, we'd get more. Um, trade schools, we would get an electrified commuter rail, you know, all these things would happen if we changed our electoral system. To allow for the breakage of the democratic dictatorship and the end of the duopoly system. Will this happen? But I think that would reinvigorate our democracy in ways that we could just not fathom. And many more mature democracies have these kinds of sort of elections, and their, their countries run far more efficiently than ours does.
And councillor, uh, Picharelli, you have to deal with the state legislature sometimes in your role. Um, would you characterize them the same way and, and, and how, and how would you work with them in the future?
Um, I, I just wanna sort of build on. I, I don't agree, you know, you, you know, the, in terms of what Andreas had sort of proposed, but I do think. Rank choice voting would actually dramatically change elections in the state, I mean, it's. It's a majority Democrats, wh- which is not surprising, because Massachusetts is a very liberal place. But I think in the marketplace of ideas, you know, there are new candidates that come forward, but people. Maybe are afraid to vote for a candidate who's proposing something a little more radical. I think ranked choice voting allows the voices of the, the voters to actually. Be heard at a, in a more granular level, uh, while still, you know, while still sort of the, the, the logical candidate wins. So anyway, I would just throw that out there that I think is an interim step, I'm not sure, like abolishing parties is the right thing, but I think ranked choice voting. Uh, particularly where there's nonpartisan elections, like in cities. Would, would really, would really change the, the, the makeup and complexion of, of, of the local elections. Just throwing that out there.
Thank you, um, okay, let's switch, uh, let's switch to, oh, you wanna, yeah, a quick.
Yeah, I, I, I never said, uh, um, in case you're referring to me, I never said I want to abolish political parties or anything like that. I said it would allow for more, so like the Green Party and like Libertarian Party or whatever, or the Workers' Party of Massachusetts, like, they would be able to. Obtain in a semi-proportional election, because you know, they have thresholds, so if like five percent of the state votes for it, then they get some proportional seating. This will allow for more voices, uh, but I do agree, ranked choice voting would also be great, I voted for that when we had that as a ref, on the, uh, referendum. Uh, I think that would be wonderful, and I think, you know, maybe that's something to think about with the charter review.
Thank you, um, so finances, um, are on the top of mind, uh, for the chamber right now. Watertown benefits from a strong commercial tax base, uh, it helps fund the schools, it helps offset and subsidize residential taxes. Um, this is because Watertown, you know, um, shifts the maximum amount possible to commercial taxes. You know, our, our large life sciences, or life science companies may be able to handle this, but our small businesses are facing such economic uncertainty. And this is a real struggle for them, would you consider shifting from it, some of that tax burden? Back away from the commercial sector to help our small businesses, we'll start with Andres here.
Um, I, I know the city, if I remember correctly, is pursuing, um. Put more, um, on the small businesses to reduce property taxes, uh, but. At this moment, no, but in the long term, I would like the city to allow for greater zoning of housing. So that greater percentage of our tax base can rise in terms of commercial properties, how much we're getting from that. So that we don't always have to put so much on commercial properties. Um, because they do pay a good chunk, um, and I also think. You know, we can't keep relying on that, especially, you know, biotech, you know, we're seeing a lot of cuts with the NIH, um. Or is it NIS, regardless, um, there are a lot of cuts under the, uh, under the Trump administration. Which is sending the industry into a real tailspin, we're seeing a lot of layoffs, there's a lot of, you know, talk. And we've already seen a, a bit of a construction bubble with, um, biotech. So I can only imagine the further strain our city will have on our finances. And I'm like, okay, are we gonna put even more stress and burden on our commercial properties that are surviving? So I think we have to really rethink on how we do, how we are looking at our taxes, um. Sadly though, like as a municipality, we don't have a lot of room, the legislature controls a lot of the, you know, the levers of that. But I think if we, you know, really pivot towards housing construction, um, you know, I think. That will help alleviate, uh, in the long term, um, commercial property taxes.
Thank you, and same question for you councillor, uh, Picharelli.
You know, it's municipal finance is all about the math, property taxes is all about the math. Um, the reality is, most small businesses do not own their own properties, they're renting from somebody else. And most small businesses are in properties that are actually. Fairly small, um, and unlike, so, so the thing about shifting the property tax, we actually looked at. Reducing the. That, uh, uh, before, and it just did not make sense, there's just not enough. Small businesses, if you think about the total square footage of small businesses in Watertown compared to. Uh, the Alexandria's and Boylston properties, uh, 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 in Watertown. It's, it's a, it's a very tiny fraction of that. So the benefit would go to those major developers if, if we were to do it. And I will just point out that, um, under the current state law, there's a little quirk that. Not, doesn't allow us to shift the full to the maximum under state law, which is hundred seventy-five percent. Uh, because it puts a cap at fifty percent of the property must come from residential properties, and. We did, we got a home rule petition for three years that allowed us to keep that shift, that full shift a hundred seventy-five percent. That's expiring this year, if that expires and the legislature does not approve it. We may see residential property taxes go up somewhere in the ten. we may see residential property taxes go up somewhere in the ten, twelve or more percent in one year. That that's just to give you an idea of the 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 numbers we're talking about. So it just kind of, you know, we're lucky in Watertown. You look at what goes on in Newton, you look at what's going on in Belmont or Arlington or Brookline. They don't have the commercial base that we do, and they're always struggling with overrides. We're lucky, we don't.
On that same point, a lot of other towns are struggling with overrides, but the commercial growth hasn't been enough to fund the new middle school. Would you support an override to build a new middle school, Counselor Pichorelli?
Uh, no, I was very clear on that, that I don't think that's the the right thing to do. The discussion about the new middle school is a little more complicated than should we do an override? Because we'd never intended on tearing that down. We just did a feasibility study to see if we could do it. And I will just point out, if if we had one new lab building under construction, we could probably do it. But unfortunately, there are ten lab buildings that have received their permits and have not started construction at this point, and most of them will probably never be built.
Thank you. Andreas, same question to you. Would you support an override for new middle school?
No, I would not. I think certainly we can renovate parts of it. I remember the state of it when I was there. I I always remember seeing a chain where the toilet paper is. I'm thinking, wow. This is this is our tax dollars here, folks. But yeah, no, I certainly would improve, support renovations of it, but I don't think we should, we should, so we should pursue an override.
Thank you. And let's move on to competitiveness and a little bit about the environment right here. Watertown has adopted ambitious climicals. On the council, how will you ensure the city meets, you know, these goals by balancing affordability and growth? We'll start with Andreas.
Um, I believe we should take an like an above all approach. I really believe that the city, well, one, I believe we need to pursue ecological restoration or environmental restoration. There's a lot of invasive species all over the city, and I think this is a perfect opportunity for the city to go into the classrooms and into neighborhoods and talk to the citizens directly, say like, here's what we're doing, here's what you can do in your yards and your areas. Here's like climate plans that we're pursuing. We want you to understand this and be active so you can constantly put pressure on us to keep doing good work. We need to, as a city, reactivate people, you know, I look, I go to a bunch of meetings and a lot of them tend to be older folks. I don't really see people my age. I think that's a problem. I think, you know, that's why we see, I think it's great, though, like despite it, you know, we've done so much, but I look at other communities and they've not gone far enough. And I think it's a perfect point that, you know, as some of our older activists start retiring because of age, you know, I think in the city may not be as ambitious and keep being as ambitious. So I want to make sure we have young folks activated.
And I mean, how do you, how are we going to balance, you know, this ambitious goals with, you know, economic development that could, I mean, these goals.
Oh, I I think it for itself. Uh, this is a little bit my background. I majored in environmental science in my bachelor's. And if you look at climate investments, they more or less pay for themselves because by not doing it, the externalities of basically climate change and all the emissions and all the problems will outweigh it. I mean, I think it's like in the trillions of how much we're gonna have to pay if we don't do it now, and it's only gonna rapidly keep increasing. So I think it's in everybody's interest, business people especially, to support climate initiatives and want to fund it. Because it pays for itself in the long term. Solar pays, if you own the solar panels in like a couple decades, if not even sooner, because the data, AI data centers increasing electricity prices, that's going to pay for itself. Heat pumps pay for themselves, you know, like in climates, like climate initiatives pay for themselves in the long term.
And same question for you, Counselor Pichorelli. How are we going to balance this growth and, you know, new ordinances that might, you know, regulate it?
So we in Watertown have gone all in on environmental sustainability. When I was on the Economic Development Planning Committee, we wrote the first ordinance requiring buildings over ten thousand square feet to install solar panels. The first ordinance on the East Coast. And that made national news. We've since built, we're, you know, next April, the first, the first lead platinum net zero energy high school in America will be opening in Watertown. So we built the first two first net zero energy public elementary schools in Massachusetts. And what we decided on the council is it's not good enough to talk the talk, we need to walk the walk. And if we're gonna ask developers to do it, whether residential or commercial developers do it, we need to do it ourselves. And we need to lead the way, we need to show it is possible to do it in a financially sustainable way. So it's going to be both financially sustainable and environmentally sustainable. And that's really sort of the place, you know, where I'm at in terms of being the Chair of Budget Fiscal Oversight Committee for the last sixteen years is figuring out how we're going to save money by investing when we do new buildings to make them energy efficient. And it's interesting that developers, like, look at the building across the street from Town Hall, that that new, both boom, the 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 one at that opened where the store twenty four used to be and the one that's being built right now, both of them all electric buildings. And I talked to the developers when they were building them, they did, they were not required to make them all electric buildings. But they told me it's cheaper for them to put one appliance in every apartment, a heat pump that both heats and cools, than to put two appliances in each apartment, a gas furnace and an electric air conditioning compressor. Because it's less money. They don't have to put that that building across the street, that hundred fifty five units, if that had gas heating it, they would have to put a hundred fifty five gas meters on the back of that building. They don't have to do that anymore. It's actually, yes, it makes sense. If you think about it in the long term, it will pay in the long term. So I'm, you know, but again, it's a balance. We don't want to stifle economic development in Watertown, but we also don't want to, you know, we we also want to meet our environmental goals.
Thank you. So I told you all at the beginning, last question, if you could time travel to any one day in history, just to observe, not to change anything, which day would you choose and why? Let's start with Andreas on this one.
Oh, I remember reading that. It was it was difficult. If I was to indulge myself, I would probably go back to pre-colonial Massachusetts and just observe the nature of the permeable forests and the beauty of all the animals that are sadly not here. I think that truly would be life changing. But if I was an if I was an anthropologist, I would probably try to go to maybe like a battle of the late Neolithic farming period because there's a genetic bottleneck within our male DNA, which shows that there's a high level of violence. So I would love to see if I could find, like, provide proof for us of what occurred and the social, like, the 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 so the social beings of those types of societies. I think that'd be very informative for us today.
Thank you. And same for you, Counselor.
Well, this is a hard one because there's so many things that happened that I wish I could have been there to see. But if I had to pick one, I think I would pick the morning of April nineteenth seventeen seventy five at the Old North Bridge in Concord to basically stand on the bank beside the Minutemen who were just ordinary farmers and shop owners and watch them fire the first shot at the start of the Revolutionary War, causing the British Army, the strongest military force in the world, to turn around and run and retreat. And when the British finally surrendered eight years later, this led to the founding of the first constitutional republic in the world based on the consent of the governed and the rule of law. And if you think about where we are today in the United States and what's going on in Washington DC, I think that's a really, you know, let's not forget how we got here and how important those two things are. Anyway, so it's but it is, that's where I wish I could be. I I would just to see the look on the British faces as they turn and rantail would would just be priceless.
Thank you. And we don't have much longer, so as we go to closing statements, please try to keep them short. And, you know, it'd be great if you could also touch on, you know, either your experience or your youth, both the both of you, because that's really one of the, one of the, one of the key differences between you both. So let's start with Andreas' closing statement.
Um. Well. You know, if I was elected city councillor, you know, I feel I would provide, oh, one, like you said, a more youthful look, but I also understand the affordability crisis we're currently in. How, you know, we're all anxious as as a, as a really a generation, but also as a society, we've lost hope, we've lost our touchstones. And I believe local government can be sort of a pillar of light in that we can provide people kind of a sort of hope and say, look, here's what we're doing. There is a hope of tomorrow, things will get better. I hope to God that does. But yeah, I I as a city councillor, I'd like to, you know, really work towards providing hope and saying like, here's how we're going to help reduce housing and rent prices. Here's how we're going to help you afford childcare and live your life. You know, that the things are going to get better and that you don't have to worry. And so that's what, as a city councillor, I would try to embody and work towards. And I just go, you all vote, even if not for me, I just hope you, you know, take some civic pride and go out there and
Thank you. And Counselor Pichorelli?
Um, so I'm running for reelection because I want to live in a vibrant, diverse, safe community with pretty tree-lined streets and great schools. Because I want to live in a community that's financially well-run and avoiding financial crises. Because I want to live in a community with engaged residents where everyone feels like they belong. And after talking to thousands of Watertown residents, I know that that's what they want too. Since I was first elected to the city council, I've worked tirelessly to achieve this vision for Watertown, using my experience in how government works, my knowledge of state law and municipal finance, my understanding of the community, and my business experience in managing people, projects, and budgets. I offer a proven track record of getting results, financial and technical expertise and community involvement. And I'm looking forward to continue working on residents behalf towards our shared vision of a better Watertown.
Thank you both, and thank you everyone for attending today. A reminder that a recording will be in your boxes pretty soon and that a live and yeah, it will also be on our YouTube channel if you want to watch. Finally, Friday, October tenth, we will be hosting the Other Debate. This is with the at-large candidates, so make sure you register for that on the website. Thank you for attending and have a great day, everybody.
Thank you.